At this time, we have the public meeting that is subject to public clause nineteen seventy five, chapter two, three, one, this is the only thing that's been known, and will send the charges on October 1st for holding over the city of Hall, and file of the city clerk's office formal action will be taken. Council President, I understand you'd like us to bring state even locations if you would like to conduct that now.
Please, sir.
Certainly. God in the universe, look down with favor upon those here assembled and bestow thy guidance upon members of the government body and their deliberations. This we ask in thy name. Amen. Roll call. Councilwoman Evans.
Present.
Councilwoman police now, council vice president police now.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa Edward. Councilwoman Zola.
Present.
Councilman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Persby. President, Mr. Wes Bridges.
President.
And Mr. Deloog.
President.
On your call, Council President. At this time, we have moments silence in honor of the.
Everyone.
Everybody. Thank you. Council President, would you want to presentations? At this time, we have Mr. Cruz and Mercadian here for a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cruz, I'm David Administrator. My President, thank you for the opportunity. As I mentioned to you, as Dr. Review, I'm for Mercadian, the consulting company that we have doing our audit for the city. I ask if you would be interested in coming over to present to you, being that this is actually this body's first opportunity that you're going to have with an audit report that you at least have read by now. I would like for you to hear from them exactly what is the purpose of an audit, et cetera, et cetera. And Mercadian is here, Mr. Warren is here, and it will be presenting, and there'll be a vote for questions as they go along. Thank you.
Thanks for everybody. Question to be here, present two thirty twenty one audit results, which we issued to record on second twenty twenty two. The document which we handed out to you will be reviewing with you is a high level summary of audit results with conventional highlights, control, control and compliance audit findings, management letter recommendations, as a required audit communication from us, the auditor team. So without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Jack Campbell. He's going to present.
Good evening. Good evening. All right, so I will start off on slide one, agenda. I'll go through the scope of services, the audit process and results and required conditions. On the next slide, we have the scope of services. So we were engaged to report on the financial statements of the city for year end of January twenty twenty one. We also reported on the supplementary development of financials, and the audit was performed in accordance with U.S. tax, government standards, and New Jersey Division of Local Revenue Service requirements of audit. So on slide three, we have some audit process. And so our audits are our processes, which we don't forget, reasonable transaction, but we perform audit procedures that are designed to address significant material account balances and assertions we've had in the field. We inquire presence, we perform walk-through transactions to understand the city, their operations and financial results. And we perform our audit by doing detailed testing, we also send out for your confirmations to confirm cash, debt, and other items, and ultimately deliver the financial statements to draft. On the next slide, slide four, we have the audit results. There is one modified opinion on the financial statement, which is a clean audit opinion. However, as we will go through, there were seven financial inquiries, four of which were noncompliant to law or arrangements, not accident. On the next slide, we have financial statements of current funds. So in twenty twenty one, this is recovered from the current values minimum. So financial results improved from the previous year. Total assets in the current fund increased to two, uh, two hundred and ninety. And overall, unbalanced increase to twenty point four million. On the next slide, we have corrected and uncorrected statements. There was no uncorrected statements, although there was one photo of a certain classification, and there was a minor material amount, and one adjustment was made to that to report the state loan savings credit. On the next slide, we have the seven financials we have, most briefly through them. First one is the facilities receivable at Trans water works. Some background on that, so that's a very, um, and increasing the whole and misables receivables reported on the Trans water works. But going forward, now that the state has taken over the operations of the Trans water works, we will be looking at that closely to see how that is resolved. Personal records, we requested some personal records, personal records to the end of the audit, which the personal department has been fully appropriated for. Budget and appropriations are over expenditure, these are over expenditures of budgeting amounts. There's only about two hundred thousand of that, money that we're not using, it's not a matter of finding, because under, under the G L G S rules, on the budget basis, they can't, they can't head over as long as. News of court diagram confirmation for performance timing. And some departments' cash deposits were not deposited within forty eight hours under under the G L G S rules. Minutes were not available for public inspection, and some made me convert some funds after the consent agreement occurred, the first story was done after it had been taken. On the next slide, we have some management corrections. So currently, there's no written accounting policies and procedures manual, so we are going to that finance department implement a written manual. There's currently no succession thing in the finance department, it's more departments upstate. There's some old grant receivables that may not be collectible. Municipal court, all the persons, we decided some trouble, got any support for future actions that we've selected, which we discussed in the last year, and for tax stuff, we had some important tracing, tax, underlying tax stuff documentation. And then to finish off with some current communications, there's no changes to the financial procedures, no change of the, you know, the county's standard, there was no incorrect statements, all the investment estimates were reasonable, and we received full cooperation or management, there's no discreditors or management, and there's no other financials here. I would like to say that the folks have always been really appreciated by the finance department, so these findings are really just compliance findings from the various areas. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you. Questions? Um, Madam President, I have a few questions. First one, sir, are any kind of water works, when do you expect that law to be completed?
So I'll show you the water works will fall under our audit, just every year. Next one, we're current, summer period, first twenty two.
So we have this number that are the most recent audit, I think those include the scope of audit.
Okay, no scope of audit required. I started earlier.
I have a question, do you find, highlighted pretty well something, systemic issues, are there any good for reaching the requirement, systemic issues across our government affecting park departments consistently, the departments with the.
No, I did mostly this during term, with the statute and management positions. So I'm sure there's not there is procedures manual, but some of the teams are over here that are doing some things.
Did you happen to find one of the last procedures manuals were in the third, sir?
I do not know.
Thank you very much. Do you have a question?
So my question are based on what your question found, did your question support the registration based off your findings? Am I allowed to ask, you have registration question based on your findings? Based on your findings?
I believe Mr. was, Mr. Paul, you didn't address that, that a lot.
Yes.
So we asked what man has.
Thank you. Thank you. So then I guess Mr. Cruz. Thank you. So basically, the audit findings that were, that were here, um, the one that was recurring, the, the personnel records for the new hires, right, was a recurring finding, and then we stated, so I did have questions about standard operating procedure manuals, you know, was this even established, should we have it? But now that Mr. Penella is gone, and was the personnel director here, who now runs the personnel department, right, and then they report to? And what are we going to do moving forward to fill or not fill that position, but most importantly, to make sure that these personnel files with the change in leadership are maintained as they should be?
And, uh, my President, that is actually a good question. The issue, the main issue we're having at some point with personnel is that when the auditor would come and as they may have mentioned, they actually view an actual sampling of the files, and in some instances, some of the, the people that they would request to see those files, there may have been a couple of documents that were not in the folder at the time, or it would take too long for the department to produce the documents. And since they're moving along as, you know, at the process of going along, they need to move to other fields of the audit, and so those will be defined as not having a consistency with having the document, however, uh, the documents are in the files, there are times where perhaps something happened to one of the forms, and maybe it's because it's several people in personnel, that just one person, they may be working in a file, and they pull something out, and then they, they don't put it in, but of course, eventually they find it and put it back in the file, but by then, that portion of the audit is already done, and it was done to other things. But we have rectified, or at least we tried rectifying, at some point, there was no communication from, uh, from the personnel, uh, individual that would be handling the, the request from the auditor, and, uh, the change that we have now done is that the auditor, when he is now moving forward to follow with the future audits, they are going to be coming to not just me, but also the chief of staff, and say, these are the documents that we are requesting from these departments, so that we are aware what is being asked from them, not that we're going to intervene into the documents that they're requesting, but we are going to ensure that the personnel responsible to supply those documents are actually coming forward with the documentation on a timely fashion.
So now, like I said, thank you for that, but now that Mr. Penella is gone, who was the personnel director, who's running the personnel department?
Uh, we have two supervisors now actually overseeing the function, and I would rather not use names, Councilwoman, my President, and use names on the book with the person. But there are two individuals currently working at supervisory positions at in personnel, and if there is anything specific that needs to be addressed at a different level, it goes to the Assistant Business Administrator, and then it goes to myself, and it gets resolved just as it was going forward.
Okay, and so then, um, under the finding for, for the personnel files, the corrective action plan states that procedures have now been set in place along with training, right, on the.
Yes.
Payroll for each of our system. So then, um, would we be able to see a copy of the procedures that have been put in place?
It's attached to your resolution.
The procedures itself?
Uh, yeah, they could have, but there, there's an area that says corrective action plan.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little closer, but I'm looking at the, the plan that just says what you have there. Okay, so Trenton Water Works has its own personnel, um, I guess the over there with Trenton Water Works, how does that work in, in reference to the audit that they, that they look, they're looking at, at personnel, are they looking here in the city, um, three nineteen state and Trenton Water Works personnel, or is it just limited to here?
Well, the, all of the functions from hiring to any other actions actually happen as a central office of personnel, but we have in, uh, in other departments, which we have people that facilitate, uh, personnel matters, and so that does not, the findings do not affect what is being done at what.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it there, thank you.
Madam President, anyone to comment on this question? Yes, sir.
If you can get your microphone.
Sure, well, I appreciate that we got this today, but we didn't get this presentation until around lunchtime today, and I really don't feel comfortable, but I know the resolution they want, uh, may or may not related to this. We really need to get this type of information beforehand, regarding the audit, particularly the presentation, because what we have with, um, and what we're looking at is, these are very important issues, and I don't wish to make your job any more difficult, but we really need more time, uh, so we reviewed this before we can ask questions.
Madam President, so, Madam President, the, the findings that are attached to the resolution, if you look at the attachments, there are one, two, three, four, there are five pages of the findings, uh, these were actually submitted to the clerk's office along with the resolution at some point before this meeting took place before this morning. So the actual presentation is actually something that was provided to us sometime last night, but, um, the findings, findings are actually here, the documents that you received today, as I mentioned, just the presentation. But probably the same thing that you will see in the recent paper that you have in the rest of.
With all due respect, when we get the docket packet that this is, this.
Yeah.
Just got work I did out. Must do a great job of doing service to you, I mean, the gentleman or company who audited, more time would be appreciated, just so.
That's right, we need to work out, uh, uh, Madam President, and we had this conversation with, uh, with Mr. Garcia, that, um, if it's the will of this council for us to produce documentation sooner than you're getting them for, for the meeting, that's something that we can work on on the schedule, I mean, it takes a couple of meetings, probably to get used to the new schedule, because everything is pushed back, now the departments are going to suffer for a hundred or two, but eventually we can, you know, we can all accommodate the schedule, if the wish of this council is to receive documentation way ahead of time than this meeting, I mean, that's something that you could definitely, we can work out. So if it's the will of the body to make that, I mean, we can, we can do that.
Absolutely, it's actually something we've talked about, or just put in a memo, not too long ago, the question that we have questions, we get it to the departments, so they can get those questions, so we get to hear, we can do further explanations, then we can ask that, but questions just like that, we'll be able to get a heads up, give us, and then we can say, you know, it will take a while for the moment, and then be able to have review, and have better, um, we can do it, have a discussion about it.
And I believe, and I believe we also come down on the timelines, uh, these on the administrator's side, we are now, I believe, delivering the final documentation, I believe it's Monday prior to the, uh, uh, not every week, it's like not on Wednesday, not Thursday, so we aren't cutting back time, but as I said, if we need more time, we can be, and I, it's definitely a lot of paperwork, and there may be other meetings that you're going to, a lot more paperwork, so, yes.
My, my findings are just that, being actually now we're heading into the budget period, it has to do with monies of assets, you know, now, et cetera, we just want to get it right.
Sure, absolutely.
We also need to ask more questions in our.
Exactly, and this is why I felt that it was the right time for us to bring Mercadian, whatever, and, uh, you know, no vote for, and you can have a way, and, you know, there you go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I just have one question, um, well, maybe it's a part of the other ones, you're all, actually, both I was, so, there was, in the findings, this is actually from Mercadian, they said he had challenges finding several items, challenges, did you actually end up getting those on findings, or were those still outstanding, and, and I guess that's for all of us, there were several items over here that you said, um, you had a challenge finding, and also, the other part of the question is, how much time do you have to give, um, the city, the departments, time to get the information that is not readily available to you?
Uh, since your first court, um, after the audits concluded, um, we don't, they have their follow-up, as I was saying, I think we follow up the next year when we start planning for the next year's audit. We don't necessarily look back at those transactions and ask you guys any stuff, but we design our new audit procedures to address those areas of weakness. And then to answer your second question, um, how much time for the two thirty twenty one audit, I believe we concluded that by December of twenty twenty one, and then this last year for the transition year of twenty twenty one, that took a little bit longer, but they were still reconciling samples in the finance department, um, so that actually gave them a little more time to find stuff that were requested.
So to be clear, if you asked for something from one of our, our files, and it's not readily available, there's not many time that is allowed that they can go to find it, so there's not a risk period at all, automatically has to kick to the next following year?
Yeah, we do follow one, the following year, if, if we, it depends on when we finalize the audit, it can be early or late behind on when they come to us, from, from the city, for example, okay, my dad just is the age of some type of, um, so I'm going to give the city more time to find it, but if we're just trying to get all, we're not going to wait for five, five, twenty five transactions, we're just going to wait until.
Thank you.
Madam President?
So how long in time, tell us the months that you started to do the twenty twenty one audit?
I, I believe we started out in September and October of twenty twenty one, and I believe we finalized it in January of twenty twenty two.
So within that time, within a month, four months, this, the city still couldn't give you the documents that they couldn't find in the first place, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, so they just did that?
I don't think it happens, or if there's a certain issue.
I was an auditor for twenty six years of my life, so that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking, like, we give time for people to find things, if they have things, they will do those things, all right, and so the recurring finding that you found, how many years did you find the same recurring finding?
Um, those are available in the pre-audit records, um, I, in auditing this is twenty eighteen, um, and I think a few of those findings are, I think, were, if you'll define the receivables, goes back a couple of years, um, they had a, I guess, a controller, uh, who changed jobs, she didn't see this control.
Yes.
So that's, that's probably seven, eight.
You should see some changes with the receivables and the, and the term.
I, uh, made sure that the address of the, and so forth, and you can report on a cash basis, so, you know, the revenues, we hope the revenues, but we would like to see, you know, make sure you're as efficient as you can be in that area.
Thank you. Thank you. When you, when you find these inconsistencies, let's call them, uh, the next year, you're doing an audit, how are they applied then, and then are there any penalties for these inconsistencies that you did not find when you did the initial audit, the paperwork, the documentation was not there?
Um, yeah, so we, we basically, we use our procedures, either the current, or the last resolution, or depending on the.
You said you were, I'm sorry.
The procedures, sorry, and you select more transactions, similar to that, um, but it's a clean audit, so we didn't find any missing or financials, other than those two over there. Every year, that's my mission, it's all working, um, and.
Thank you. Thank you.
On your call, Council President.
Proceed.
Council President, I just have a presentation, if, uh, Andy's here from Lucy's shop, uh, so, Andy's especially, is anybody here from Lucy's shop?
Here, here, I'll, I'll hold that.
No, hold that from the, uh, from the back. Okay, we'll be on. For, for Thursday, and our resolutions, and I'll proceed with, and I'll proceed with the resolutions. In the local clerk's office, we have a resolution authorizing the city council of the city to, to hold in executive session, that, that, uh, executive session, we take this later today, we have, um, so I'll go straight into seventy three, uh, resolution twenty three oh seven, the resolution certifying at the council of the city of Trenton, review the corrective action plan for the city's fiscal year twenty twenty one audit, Council President.
That will be a roll call, please.
Noted. Resolution twenty three dash oh seven four, resolution authorizing the settlement of the workers' compensation claim in the matter of William Oso versus City Trenton claim petition number twenty ten, one four four one zero, the claim amount of five thousand seven hundred ninety nine dollars and sixty cents, including attorney fees and costs. President, I beg. Um, these will be discussed in executive session, so if you want to have a vote for now, we can change that, and we can bring it to our executive session.
So, um.
That's Council President's role. Roll call. Uh, resolution oh seven five, Council President, if I can, if I can call it up. Or should I be asking resolution call?
Roll call, please.
Resolution oh seven six, I believe this is another workers' compensation claim matter in any code for City Trenton. And resolution oh seven seven, this resolution is something about workers' compensation. And Resolution 07-7, this resolution is summoning another workers' compensation claim in the matter of Ronnie. I'm going to try this, he used versus Sinal Trenton. Values? Thank you. Uh, value system corrected, claim, uh, petition number 2014-2854, claiming amount of $33,803.60, attorney fees and costs.
Hold barred.
Noted. Resolution 07-8, resolution to authorize incorporation of $100,000 from funds allocated to City Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, TDI Connect, a subsidiary given from the United Way of Greater Eastern County for refurbishment, distribution of personal computers to Trenton residents.
I have a question. Um, who can speak on this? What is the plan for distribution of these computers, um, to families within the City of Trenton? Are we distributing these?
Oh, so the nonprofit does is that they actually, um, acquire computers and they have a selection process, like, we're not involved in the selection process of this nonprofit. And, uh, if you look at the document that is attached on the section page, gives you the breakdown of the, the money, how the money is going to be used. Um, if you look at the, the fourth word, "as" of page two, it tells you that the cost for the 200 new computers refurbished PCs for, for the period of, uh, April 21st to December 22nd. Uh, keep in mind that this actually, as long as it falls, uh, within the timeline of the ARP, those fundings can also be, um, included going backwards and forward, as long as they're within that time period. So that's why they have, uh, they're acting, you can also give $20,586,000 for those computers that they donated in, uh, between April and December of '22. Uh, they are, uh, they cost to refurbish and provide 648 computers for the year 2023 and 2024, total of $33,531. Uh, they're going to outreach to identify and gather of PC donations and refurbishment, $4,500. Outreach groups and individuals to distribute and create, uh, refurbished PCs, $4,683. And then they are also, um, they're, they're creative, they're reusable, sustainable management, English, Trenton digital navigator and computer literacy courses to assist as support communities using the digital environment and to identify and support entry programs within the community partners, $33,700. So that, um, that actually makes up the total of $100,000.
I, I just want to be clear, um, we're giving the ARP money to a nonprofit in order to, in order to purchase or refurbish these computers to families. But what I want to know is, do we know anything about who these computers are going to? Like, what is the criteria for who these computers will go to?
Uh, they are city residents, for companies named in the application.
Please, thank you. I missed that, I apologize.
And it is in the application.
I know, Chris, I want to point this out.
Okay, I know we had a question to be, for us to ensure.
The students here in the City of Trenton. So, so from my experience with this, they have been going to the students here in the City of Trenton, um, be it graduating students or those who just need. They, well, whoever's class, I mean, there is a group of, like, the high schools, um, different nonprofits. Um, they also have been recipients of them, um, over the last few years. Um, but they're Trenton residents who are indeed, whether going to college or staying here with the city.
Um, I am being made aware that there's somebody from those schools that is here.
That's good, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President and members. My name is Sandra, I interviewed this. I have served Trenton Public Schools for the last 21 years as an educator. And I am currently the supervisor of English as second language and by the whole progress for secondary schools. I am here today to support the resolution before Trenton City Council to approve the American Rescue Plan grant application that was made by TDI Connect. This grant will enable, over the next two years, for TDI to solicit hardware donations, refurbish and distribute PCs to Trenton residents and create sustainable computer literacy training in English and Spanish. So the students such as ours can have access to devices and obtain training in the use of the digital environment beyond the school system. As a supervisor of Trenton Public Schools, I fully support TDI Connect in providing these essential services to our student population. Last year, TDI donated 81 laptops to discerning graduating seniors that obtained the New Jersey State Silo Man Liberty Award. This year, I am happy and proud to announce that we have 102 discerning seniors that are candidates to receive this recognition on June 15th. And it is my hope that with your support, TDI Connect continue to donate laptops to our graduating seniors receiving this acknowledgement from our state. Please support TDI Connect as they continue to provide equitable access to multilevel learners in our community. The services provided by TDI do make a difference in the lives of our students that have great difficulty in obtaining digital devices and training beyond their enrollment in our district. Your support for TDI's cost will have a lasting impact in your future. Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for that. Um, and, and yes, you told me that this will go to 102 seniors. But I want to know, what I'm asking is, what is the criteria? So for these 102 seniors that get these computers, do they have internet access in their homes? Are they required to go to college? You know, what is it that we are, what are the qualifications for these students that are getting these computers? And do they have access to internet if they just get them?
The graduating seniors do have access to internet through our school system. Um, specifically, it is determined that they will have access, uh, to internet through TDI Connect after graduation. I must tell you that we surprised all the students during our event last year in June. And a lot of the boys, that, how thrilled they were to have that help, uh, sponsor. They served as our sponsor and they were recognized because they had a hardship funding, uh, getting the funding to even buy computers so they can go to college. The seniors were totally deserving of this acknowledgement and recognition and support. A lot of them, uh, went on to, were accepted in several colleges. They have a diverse, a variety of interests in their education. We received actually all the laptops and the students were sign off when they received it. We have documentation to prove that. And we're hoping that this, uh, program can continue. Because definitely our families are minority, uh, family of students of minorities and they have great difficulty in ensuring funding, not only to purchase the devices, but also to fund their further education, uh, beyond high school graduation. Um, we did not complete a formal, uh, application process, if that's what you're asking. But we are sure that we was, that they received, uh, notification from the state that they were deserving of that manure award. And thus, what the students have are granted laptops.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, yeah, I have a question regarding, I think, uh, um, regarding this, it may not actually be related to me now. Uh, there's a contact person listed on his application, name is Ray Ingram. And I don't know if the phrase remains meaningful to him. He's in this room, he has any questions about the application. Because I do also, also have another question about, as much as we have other seniors in high school, we also have other seniors, uh, or more senior, um, in the state of New York. Many of whom do not have access to, uh, computers or training. And I know from virtual, particularly from my former, kind of knowing board, it's very difficult, uh, for seniors to access information and be able to speak on, or be able to access city information regarding the development or, you know, someone or any of these. Computers may also be what go to senior citizens as well as our students now.
I'm not connected to my, to the TDI Connect. I represent the school.
Yes, I understand.
As a recipient of the award, but maybe it's to be able to answer this question.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, I just happen to notice that you were on the other application. Or, or any other, Ray.
Ray, can you give us a thumbs up for, thumbs down, go and come on up to the mic. I don't know.
Good evening, Council President, Council members.
Good evening.
Ray Ingram from San Belmo Circle, 35 years resident of the city. Um, there were some questions about what criteria there are for people who get the laptops or the desktops that we have. There are no criteria. If somebody asks, we support them. The criteria is that they ask. Our job, if you like, is to get the donations of the PCs so that we can refurbish them. And through COVID, that's been an awful lot of effort to do that. But we try and get the PCs where we want. So there's a lot of nonprofits in the city that have bad PCs because they're dealing with after-school programs for younger kids. And hopefully, they will then also be able to give out the PCs to those younger kids as part of their programs. The first part is get the programs going.
Any other questions? Consider.
Resolution 07-9, resolution to authorize appropriation of $70,334 from funds allocated to the City of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, placed soccer nonprofit international corporate operational expenses for Trenton Beach Soccer.
Consider.
Resolution 23-18 has been approved, is that correct? Four, five, okay, yes. Uh, Resolution 23-081, resolution authorizing the award for professional legal services contract to Cynthia Picardo, that's why, through a parallel process in accordance with NJSA 19044A, 20.5, that's set to provide prosecutorial services for a period of one year from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. And Trenton is recorded in an amount not to exceed $8,000.
Questions? Yes. Uh, Ms. Regis, did you mention these questions?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a question with regards to, um, Ms. Cynthia Picardo's, um, resolution. Um, in her big proposal form, she's showing that her hourly rate is $100 per hour, but in the, the resolution, we're showing 215.
Yes, um, the way that our prosecutors are paid is per session. So while they may have an hourly rate, they're only paid for the sessions that they cover. And there's also a prep session associated with that because of, as opposed to when everyone was full in person and they were able to discuss the cases ahead of going before the judge. Um, they now have to reach out and call all the individual folks on their dock. So there's, so it's simply by session, there's no hourly rates.
Okay, so everybody has the same standard, 215 an hour for 215 rates per session? Everybody has to say it's 215?
215 per session, everybody is consistent, lower and higher, no lower, and the prep sessions are the same as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Lee. Um, my other question is, uh, Mr. Burgess, so, um, it seems that we are going to be paying on, uh, services that we can on January 1st. There are operating as prosecuting, there are.
That's correct. They were, they were already operating, they're just getting 40 down. But first of all, we have to address the time frame of what we're doing. So that's why, hey, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator.
Any other questions? Consider.
Resolution 23-082, resolution authorizing the award of professional legal service, excuse me, professional legal service contract to Henry Stewart, that's why, through a parallel process in accordance with NJSA 19044A, dash 20.5, that's set to provide prosecutorial services for a period of one year from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. And Trenton is recorded in an amount not to exceed $137,000.
Council President, I'd like to just, uh, for clarification, um.
It's okay.
Um, yes, and you will notice that this, uh, contract, I just see we can hire this person for useful prosecutors, if he's in charge and not only, um, scheduling prosecutors, making sure all the sessions are covered, that is strictly respect for specific contract.
Any other questions? Consider.
Resolution 23-083, resolution authorizing the award of professional legal services contract to Corinne J. Crawford, that's why, through a parallel process in accordance with NJSA 19044A, 20.5, that's set to provide prosecutorial services for a period of one year from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. And Trenton is recorded in an amount not to exceed $112,000.
Questions? Consider.
Resolution 23-084, resolution authorizing the award of professional services, professional legal services contract to Christina Vazquez, that's why, through a parallel process in accordance with NJSA 19044A, 20.5, that's set to provide prosecutorial services for a period of one year from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. And Trenton is recorded in an amount not to exceed $14,000.
Questions? Consider.
Resolution 23-85, resolution authorizing payment of potential litigation to Henry J. Austin Health Center for provisions of comprehensive primary care, healthcare services to uninsured and uninsured residents of the City of Trenton for $259,000.
Questions?
Yes, I have a question, Council President. Councilman Lee, regarding, uh, this, this CC 2019, is this a payment towards 2019 contract or what do you mean?
Council President, if I may.
Yes, it's the last question.
Thank you. Um, Council will notice that this is actually one of the items that we have to discuss at executive session to address those issues.
Thank you, sir.
On your call, Council President.
On your call, Paul.
Noted. On Resolution 23-086, resolution authorizing the execution of the purchase money mortgage documents, a first $200,000 mortgage dollars between City of Trenton and Washington Harris for the sale and purchase of city-owned property in the amount of $56,250.
Questions?
I don't want to consider requests, we cannot be asked this, 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 this. Resolution.
Title.
Consider the change.
Consider the number. Resolution 23-087, resolution authorizing application acceptance of a grant from hazardous discharge cycle mediation fund, public capacity program from New Jersey Department of Development Authority and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to conduct remediation at the Ascent Daylight Project Site in Trenton, New Jersey.
Questions? Consider.
Resolution 23-088, resolution authorizing application acceptance of a grant from hazardous discharge cycle mediation fund, public energy program through New Jersey Department of Development Authority and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to conduct remedial, remedial action at former Stark Heights Center, 2640 Mulberry Street, blocks 2200, 22001, lots 3 and 4, Trenton.
Questions? Consider.
Resolution 23-089, resolution authorizing application acceptance of a grant from hazardous discharge cycle mediation fund, public energy program through New Jersey Department of Development Authority and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. public safety program through New Jersey Department of Environmental Authority and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to conduct remedial investigation at former Edmondson Cleaners site, three hundred and three ten Prospect Street, block forty-four oh two, lots five and six, and six point oh one in Trenton, New Jersey.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine zero, resolution to amend resolutions twenty dash six seventy-one and twenty-one dash zero one six to rescind the sale of certain properties to the Manuel Orla Molu and authorize the return of the balance of deposits to the Orla Molu, lest the initial deposit increase.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine one, resolution authorizing the city of Trenton Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan allocation plan to be submitted to HUD as substantial investments in twenty twenty-one, annual action plan in accordance with the plan and development notice CPB twenty-one dash.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine-two, resolution awarding a contract through a parallel process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A, twenty point four, that's set to the rescue mission of Trenton for emergency shelter for homeless, single individuals for a period of one year from February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, to February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four in an amount not to exceed two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Questions?
I'd like to analyze what you've already mentioned to me contact. I'd like to have that date by the twenty-third, uh, moved to March ninth for a quiet expiration date.
Any other questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine-three, resolution authorizing building application for the twenty twenty-two recycling tonnage rank with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine-four, resolution accepting bid award contract to Brent material company for the furniture and delivery of Metropolitan M nine four uptile iron fire hydrants for Trenton Water Works for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed two hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash oh nine-five, resolution exercising the option to extend the contract for additional one year awarded to Stock Testing Incorporated for inspection testing, prevent and repair maintenance, binary and secondary equipment at Trenton Water Filtration Plant from date of award in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine-six, resolution exercising the option to extend the contract for additional one year awarded to Minnesota maintenance company for sledging work for Trenton Water Filtration Plant from date of award in an amount not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Questions?
Resolution twenty-three dash oh nine-eight, resolution accepting bid award contract to Harrison Inc. Incorporated for furniture delivery, uh, credit, credit award, dealer for us water service business for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed three hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Questions?
Is there something here for water? Very good question. Um, we, there are so many resolutions with regards to water, and I just want to ask for the public. Um, are these backlog requests, are these annual requests, um, does this thing ever see any year from now? Or, you know, can you just kind of explain these requests to us for what it works?
Sean Semple, acting director of Trenton Water Service. Some of these are backlog, backlog, which we have to choose by, but they're usually annual allocations that you will be seeing once a year from us.
And about the same amounts we're looking at?
Well, there's some of them might vary, some of them might work.
Some are backlog, right. All right. All right. That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Any other questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine-nine, resolution accepting bid award contract to Embridge Incorporated for furniture delivery of Sassy, Hermit, and Hermagnate.
Down, down.
Sassy, Hermagnate for the water filtration plant for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed four hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Questions?
Right. Thank you. Resolution one hundred, resolution accepting bid award contract to Minnesota maintenance company for altitude valve maintenance at the water filtration plant for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand two hundred dollars.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash one oh one, resolution accepting bid award contract to Yaros Landscapes Incorporated for removal of spoils, stockpile, and store excavator materials for the water department construction and maintenance office for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed two hundred thirty-one thousand thirty dollars.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash one oh two, resolution accepting bid award contract to Univar Solutions USA for furniture delivery of sodium hypochlorite for the Trenton Water Works Filtration Plant for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed six hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Semple, may I ask your question? The President asked.
Quick question for you. So is this a duplicate expenditure? Um, well, it appears to be right, because in the last meeting from our February twenty-third meeting, we had approved, um, resolution twenty-three oh sixty, oh, oh sixty-three, uh, accepting the bid and awarding a contract to Kene Chemical Company. It was a voluntary, a fifteen percent sodium hypochlorite solution for Trenton Water for two years from January twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-four in an amount not to exceed seven hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars per year. And when I look in this, it's the same percentage of the sodium hypochlorite stuff. Um, and it says that, uh, we want to then award this to this company. So can you just explain what's happening?
Sean Semple, acting director of Trenton Water. That last allocation was for the sewer line. We do flip it on both sides, both water and sewer. So the last one that you approved was related to the sewer line.
Okay.
This one is in water.
Okay.
That's two different levels.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash one oh three, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to Herman's Trucking Incorporated for furniture delivery of concrete, sand, backfill material for Trenton Water Works construction and maintenance for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventeen thousand dollars.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution twenty-three dash one oh four, resolution accepting bid award contract to Alphol Wall Incorporated for rehabilitation of belt press mechanical e-watering facility at Trenton Water Filtration Plant for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Questions? Consent.
Moving on to more of those views. That follows us, Council President. We also have a walkover resolution by Mr. Harrison. Uh, the resolution is confusing, and I'll refer to Mr. Harrison, Mr. Cruz, on that one.
Good evening, Mr. President. Adam Cricklin is the best player. Uh, this resolution is for authorizing payment for a contractor to the New D Group Incorporated, uh, one thirty-five, uh, Kenland Grove, uh, the currency or whatever the urgency basis for the demolition of fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-two, and sixty-four South Hermitage Avenue in Trenton. The amount was for, uh, one hundred and five thousand dollars. And, uh, it's something that the contractor had been calling, uh, because we need to get the work done and a unfortunately, never made it to a document. So this is why we asked that if you gave them permission to walk it on and put it on the document so that we could make the contractor whole.
So to be clear, it's just a past due invoice that is served up ready and rendered, and the state just has not paid the bill?
Yes.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have two questions. Uh, when, when was the service rendered? And when was the request for payment issued, sir? Or when were we being placed?
So the notice to proceed was issued back in July twenty-six of twenty twenty-one. So we did, did work with them back then. And we have documentation of, uh, approval from DCA of the waiver that was actually, uh, given on on November seventeenth of twenty twenty-two. I am not sure if Director will stand by as to any further information of this activity or happened during the former director of the department.
I turn off, sorry, my turn.
Yes.
Can I ask you some clues? Um, what chance higher that this service was not paid?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask what chance higher this service was not paid for? If you want to come up?
Let me, uh, follow that. If you'll have your contract.
Who's walking this on is my question, because I'm not aware of this. Okay, so what is the reason that it's being walked on? Because I don't have the answers to these questions.
So, um, according to the information that is received from the director, the, this resolution was actually pulled by the former council who refused to make payment. And so this is why it's now being walked on.
So former council received this, and they just paid the bill there?
Yes.
I have a question, Council.
Do you have, Council, have you got this, that, that, that vision was here?
Councilman Edwards. Is this something that can fit in the budget that we already approved, like the urgency funding names? Or will this go outside of that?
No, it will still go within the same, uh, budget as we continue to, uh, we can still make adjustments in the budget if necessary, put the rich funding available for these types of demolitions under the, uh, basic properties we call like big fee. And then that goes be free for demolition and oil when it comes to the emergency demolitions. If it was a regular demolition where we do a day and bits coming for the actual demolition, then there is funding available to, uh, one of the state agencies that provided, uh, money for the city to do, uh, demolition. So the funding is available.
Council President, if I may.
Absolutely.
Um, I think what information that we need to get through between now and then is confirming whether this was placed on the agenda um, with the prior council and
Yes.
why it was taken off and why it was not put back on. I think that's going to be the information that this council would need.
Let me hear the answer.
Okay. Okay.
This was pulled from our, from our records, and we looked, and we saw this, and we saw this coming. Um, our record says that it was pulled in December. So this was pulled in December meeting. Now, I can't tell you what it was pulled, but we have listed it's pulled from, uh, I think the latter, the latter even December. Who was it? Who was it pulled? Who was it pulled? I can tell you it was pulled, I can't exactly tell you for who sent, whether it was the registration or whether it was from the, uh, Council President.
Counsel, if it's Council, uh, Council President, who will, I will gather as much of that information I can send it to you between today and tomorrow so we can get those questions answered. Um, and it'd be, we can extend that conversation in respect to, if we need to have that, uh, a discussion in executive session, but I will give that information for Council.
Quite frankly, it should have been your personal counsel. So it was really not a guess.
I'll look at my records as well to see if I have, perhaps, notes from, to see if it was pulled during, um, the document review, or if it was pulled from my current, but I mean, I'll look at my notes.
We have, we have to go back and actually look at the tape actually, if you have, sure.
Seven twenty, twenty-two, I think.
Adam, any other questions? Just one, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Cruz, has this come, or are you using tape on any more work and selling the revenue?
I, I, I think it, I, I think it, I, I would say, at this point, there is, there is really, there hasn't been an emergency as of the last couple of days where there's a fire or something, you can get knocked down. Uh, but it will definitely prevent those from reaching out to another vendor, the new lease, to provide a price book which may be, uh, a disadvantage to the city if we're looking for a bit pricing. So, and, and it will also avoid litigation, but, uh, we can have the information before Thursday as to what occurred uh, during the December meeting, and hopefully, you know, we can come up with the notes.
Thank you, sir. I have, uh, a ballot on, but I also just want to note that there, and I'm not sure, maybe it's something that I'm just not familiar with. The dates on here are saying seventy-one dash twenty twenty-one, and it, um, to me, it should be seven dash one. Uh, I'm looking at all the dates on there. They're looking at this on the certificate of the structure and the imminent and extreme hazard date seventy-one dash twenty twenty-one. And then on the page adjacent to it, it's saying exactly, the signatures and the dates below are correct, but on each page, four pages, they're saying, it's saying exactly seventy-one dash twenty twenty-one. If you get that corrected. Yeah, it's happening. On the bottoms are correct, but at the top, all four pages say seventy-one. Would that have no other questions?
I have just one question. Mr. Bridges?
Yes, sir.
So on the resi, on the resolution, um, you were asking who people walk the law and everything, how this, how this happened? It has yours for signature stand backs? At the top, it's being approved, and will it stand back s- signature for approval? Does that mean we didn't, did you not know this was coming, or did you not approve it?
Well, no, I approved it, but as you know, when we have our review session, one of the things we do is prepare for any questions that we may have in review this. So when, when I looked at this document, So when I looked at this document and I looked at the documents that are associated with this document, prepared to address those, I don't have any problem with legality of this. I just wasn't prepared to answer the grand or detailed questions that rightfully he answers to. No, in terms of formal legality, it's fine, but the questions you had, I just did not prepare as to when the work was performed, when it was before Council, but when it was pulled from the document, if I was pulled from the document and more, why it was not put back on, I just don't have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council, moving on to ordinance, we have first reportances for first reading the introduction. We are at Resolution 23 dash 005, ordinance creating internet awards as soon to the duties of the administration of all government control in City Trenton.
For by administration.
Moving on to Resolution 23 dash 006, ordinance commending the City Code, City Trenton.
Questions?
In ordinance commending supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, Rules of Council, Rule 2E.
Questions?
Thank you. So with 23 dash 007, the amendment is saying that public comment would be no more than three minutes for the public and that no one can yield their time during any portion thereof. I would like to suggest that that be five minutes as opposed to three for consideration for the public time, only because we're going from, we're going from 10 minutes overall for public and civic comment. We're looking to give, as we move on, civic comment five minutes. I think that we could be robbing the public for us to talk longer and then cut their time down. I think that it should at least be five minutes to match the civic comment.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes, I would like a big, typical motion to amend the ordinance to five minutes for public comment.
Would that be that?
Second?
I have a question. May I?
Call the board. But I wish for these, uh,
Well, let's, um, let us discuss. Can we do a discussion first, Chris?
Sir?
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a concern with Councilwoman Sciano. That was a suggestion that I made as well. I didn't think that cutting from 10 minutes to three minutes was conducive or fair. I did research to other councils, you know, throughout the United States and most are at three minutes. I did email you, Mr. Garcia, Council, Vice President, Council President, Mr. Cruz, the head of Bridges today, a model from another city of how we can be more inclusive in our public comments. But I also want to add that I would like for our civic comment to also be five minutes. And I would just wanted to state that for the record.
Any other questions?
No.
I have a concern of bringing our civic comments to five minutes, but some council members do like to make general announcements to the city and also speak out on certain issues that are regular and important. And I would like to propose a 107 chance. But I agree with the five minutes for public.
Anyone else?
I kind of agree with my colleagues here. I think five to five is good for public and for our civic comments. That's the public know that their comments are just as important as anything we would say because it doesn't look right. If the public comments, three minutes and ours is five, it's not a problem. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to go with five to five for public citizens' comments?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be important. They want to set nationally.
There was a little more of that. I made a motion, I made a motion against it, so Councilwoman Evans has seconded.
There's no warning for five minutes. It's not, oh, okay.
So right now for public, we're trying to be a total of seven. Motion on the floor to amend it to five minutes for public comment.
Five minutes?
Yes, Councilwoman Evans has seconded it.
All right, I'm going to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Evans?
Yes.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Sciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to Resolution, excuse me, ordinance 23 dash 008, ordinance providing for the best identification of officials and employees.
Questions?
I do have some questions for public assignment. For this regarding, we have a legislature, the situation, how this would affect Council itself. As far as the question regarding how this would affect representation in lawsuits.
I agree as well.
Yes.
Yes, that's a question.
This ordinance doesn't really do anything but codify what has been a long time existing practice in Trenton. Trenton, like most other cities, have employees, their public officials, their board members that get sued, mollified. And practice in Trenton has been to provide, like just about every other, if not every other, public body in the state, to provide their employees, their officials, their board members with a legal defense and indemnification if they get sued in their official capacity. And all this is doing is basically codifying and putting in clearer form exactly what that process is, what prior exceptions there may be. For example, there is no indemnification for punitive damages, only compensatory damages. And it's just something that probably should have been done a long time ago. We thought there was a prior indemnification ordinance years ago, but for reasons unclear, we were never able to locate it. So we're cleaning up a lot of issues with these new ordinances now. We tried to get it done, you know, over the last several years, and these are going to save a lot of time, especially the procedural issues in some of the other ordinances. But this is a new ordinance and it's designed for, you know, what I just said, not run through office people, would not seek public employment, and our police officers gets to their primary, you know. So this is something that is essentially a mandate of the city to take care of, and we're finally putting it in written form. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Consent.
Sure. 23 dash 009, ordinance commending supplementing Section 150, 150 dash 13A of the City Trenton Municipal Code related fines and penalties for littering violations.
Questions? Consent. Now, roll on. I think it is.
Thank you. Ordinance 23 dash 10, ordinance commending supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, Rules of Council, Rule 2E.
And consent, have vice president.
Just one clerical, under letter D, agenda document review, that should be changed to Wednesday? It says Thursday?
I have other questions. Councilwoman Cruz, any other? Ah, so this, and maybe it was Wednesday, Thursday, I'm trying to remember. What is the difference between this and a larger public procedure? Why is this necessary?
May I respond to this, Chris?
Please.
Um, there were, there were just some language cleanup changes to this, and there was also an issue that if the Council President or the Vice President were in their stead, the Council President designated did not allow something on the document or review something with the document. It's not contained in the codified version that we have now because apparently there's been a problem, and certainly I'm not placing anything upon this by the city clerk, but over the years, a lot of the ordinances that we have passed over time, a lot of the ordinances that were compelled or, I should say, disavowed by court decision, never found their way into the body that you can look up online and read the ordinance, you know, what's supposed to be in its appropriate form. So one of the things we added was something that came from a court case that indicated that the Council President, if something is pulled, would, to get more information, et cetera, would have to put the item back on at the next agenda. It was the design, you know, the design was to stop somebody from just pulling something forever and not allowing him to get back on for counsel to consider it. So it's generally a cleanup of the violation, and I think that's the only really significant substantive change, and I came right out of a court decision that we had. Oh, yeah, we have to thank Mr. Bridges. We also had numerous discussions, those of you who have been, you know, so vigilant attending the meetings about walk-on resolutions, as Mr. Harrison had a walk-on resolution tonight, that we have all this debate and we got to go to Robert's loose of order, is it was never addressed in our ordinances? So we just added in clear and unambiguous language addressing walk-on resolutions, so we won't have to debate that at a divided time when it comes up.
Questions? Continue.
Certainly. Ordinance 23 dash, uh, ordinance commending supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, Rules of Council.
Questions? I'm sorry, questions? Continue.
Certainly. Resolution 23 dash 12, excuse me, ordinance 23 dash 12, ordinance commending supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, Rules of Council.
Questions?
Orderance 23 dash 13, ordinance commending supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, Rules of Council.
Questions?
Ordinance, excuse me, uh, ordinance 23 dash 14, ordinance commending supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, Rules of Council.
Questions? Continue.
Okay, um, so with that, it's the extent of the draft ordinances that I have, that's good. Moving on to executives.
May I make a, uh, ma'am, may I make a motion regarding our discussion of board members in executive session, if you do not have a discussion as well?
Send our personal, I'll be allowed to comment?
Yes, we sent to an email a while ago for some prospective public workers and officers or private organizations that come up with the event, discussing it. I understand that everybody would have some passionate rights to defend our privacy and health.
That's correct. Okay.
I would do it. Just lending it to the agenda to go into executive session.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make a question? Absolutely, you may.
Um, barring that, unless there are outside attorneys that would be considered against for executive session, can we move public comments to that before we enter executive session?
Absolutely.
We have to make a motion that the City Council will make discussion of possible as any board members to fill the vacant slots at the next executive session.
Second?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Also, I heard a motion in the second to move the public comment to this moment in the meeting.
Yes.
I heard that motion, I heard that second. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Might as well.
Yeah, might as well just say the case.
So they want to say that motion?
Yeah, say the motion. Second.
Motion second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, first of all, public comment, I have, forgive me for your last name, I have Sandra, please.
She opens the door.
Oh, that's okay, thank you. I have, I asked for public comment, Mr. Ray, I believe you spoke to someone. Yeah?
Something really happened.
Okay. I'll be gone.
Good evening, Madam President, and to the President. My name is Ray, and I live in Dallas, I'm in Trenton, and I've been in the Bronx for the last 35 years. For several years now, I have been volunteering the Trenton Digital Initiative, TBI Connect, gathering donated PCs, refurbishing them, refurbishing them, and ensuring they get to Trenton residents and groups supporting that community. I wanted to thank you for considering Resolution 23 zero seven eight, as this grant will allow TBI Connect to expand its activities more broadly to support our community in bringing the digital device, especially after the COVID pandemic and the continuing uncertainty it has created. With this grant, TBI can both provide free refurbished PCs and sustainable training to build digital access as a significant community resource for everyone. A hundred percent grant will be used to support our Trenton community. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Council President, for a moment, I just wanted to just make a small token announcement for those of you who haven't been here, just so you know, during public announcement, excuse me, during public comment, uh, public comment is not a Q and A session, so you may be able to make your statements or state your opinions or whatever it is that you may have to say, but I do have to instruct you that the Council does not have to respond at this time. So should there be a question, is not expected the Council to be bound to respond to your question at that, at this time? Okay? With that said, I'm moving on to David Egbert.
Good evening, Madam President, and Vice President, and Honorable Counselor, my first came before you in January. David, I admit I was born in St. Francis Hospital during the COVID-19, but I consider myself a gentleman again. I'm back again visiting my mother. And the last time before newly elected Board Counselor, my first, I congratulated that. I'd like to congratulate the three new at large Council members, I believe all three are new to public service, so congratulations. Thank you for donating such time to community service. More people should do that. And I also want to congratulate Council President Crispin on her election as Council President and Councilmember Luciano, also on her election as Council Vice President. So I wish you well now that you're somewhat united, I believe, Council. I wish you well in your work and will check back with you on occasion when I am back in the Council. Egbert.
And please start.
Next listed, I have the Ossio Vassos.
Good evening, Madam President, and Vice, and Rest of the Council, Administration staff, my name is the Ossio Vassos, President of January Resources, project management, resource resolution. I wanted to bring this matter to your attention in hopes that in this year, the legislative body will work together, the administration staff, in resolving an issue that's come to everyone's attention. The building construction department is lacking staff. It's impacting everyone. Projects that have been approved, zoning planning processes are taking almost a year to get permits issued, and that's because there's not enough staff in the building construction department. We went from two plumbing inspectors to one plumbing inspector, narrowed down to no inspectors. So that leads to problems. The reason why I'm here today is because I see on a day-to-day basis the problems. They're overworked in the building construction. They're overworked in the building construction department. The Secretary of Home is handling complaints, people come in every day, same thing. Where's my permit? Where's my permit? Plan review should not take more than thirty, thirty-five days according to state-based guidelines. And, uh, I'm looking at plans that take five, five, six months. I know there's a person who's like, we want projects to be driven. I'm just asking that this year, council work with the administration, we're trying to find a resolution to this problem. We need more staff to handle the review process and issues of permits. The city of Trenton, there's a lot of vacant properties, people are interested in buying these properties. They're filled, their home hold is plan review and property, sorry, permit issuance, but they're subjected to vacant property regulations that are up to three thousand dollars a year. They're also paying taxes so they don't lose their property, not what they expect. Their intent is to purchase the property, renovate it, provide some public housing to someone, but yet their vacuum for it is not productive. That's all I have to say. Just asking if anybody recognizes you, having a committee that can go and make an assessment to see what's going on, because the infrastructure is just not there. Thank you very much, just want to point that out.
Thank you, Senator.
That's I have heard. Uh, try again. Did I get that?
Yeah.
All right, so thank you. Please make sure the names match with the words.
All right, uh, my name is Kerber, my address is seventeen oh eight Riverside Drive, here in Trenton. Uh, thank you, Council President and council members for talking to me tonight. Uh, I'm just here to voice my support for a resolution twenty-three dash seven nine, with the ARP proposal to play soccer on Poppy International. Uh, yeah, very exciting. Um, in addition to being a Trenton resident, I'm offered a fourth day soccer on Poppy International, which operates the Trenton Soccer League, and I'm also a volunteer coach for some hours Saturday morning sessions. Uh, PSNI has operated the Trenton Soccer League in the city of Trenton since two thousand and fifteen, and we provide free soccer programming to school-aged children with an additional focus on building healthy habits and teaching life skills to the children in the program. In two thousand and twenty-two, we measured approximately five hundred and forty Trenton youth as participants in the Trenton Soccer League. During the afternoon school year, the TYSL operated after-school programming in five schools in the Trenton School District in the spring, and then four schools after the redistricting process in the fall. And additional no-fall soccer programming is operating during our Saturday sessions in the spring, summer, and fall at George Bay Park. Uh, and during the summer sessions, the Trenton Soccer League also employs Trenton teens to help operate programming coaches. In two thousand and twenty-three, with, um, you know, this grant funding, we're hoping to continue to build the Trenton Soccer League and expand programming to reach even more Trenton youth. The TYSL after-school programming will continue to run in several schools in the district, and the Saturday morning sessions will resume in George Bay Park on our Saturday sessions in a few weeks, and I have flyers where anyone who's interested in that, um, anyone who needs to show up with the kids, we have registration on site, and we can get them playing pretty much right away. Um, and, uh, we're actually excited that we're stretching our collaboration with the City Department of Recreation, and we're going to be, uh, offering Trenton Soccer League programming at San Abel's Community Center as well starting on March twenty-fifth. Uh, and we all know how important the youth, the youth of the city are, like, what they're really hard to see as future, and just want to thank you, um, and my support and support of all you are showing your willingness to invest in our nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator.
Next listed, I have from Courtney Lee State.
Courtney Lee State, you continue our act of believing standards of the council. I'm still here at that time, it hasn't changed, Bill. I'm not going to be too long. I just wanted to say, um, how much I was in support of President seven eight with TBI, who are two students who had benefited from those computers, and it is a really good program, I'm glad you were able to fund that. I also want to say, uh, for resolution eighty-five, the, um, health center. Uh, I am very aware of the services, I'm sure you are too, and thank God to be underserved and uninsured residents of Trenton, and even though this was a voluntary road for services, never cease. Next thing I wanted to talk to you about, so a little bit housekeeping, and that's just, just, just good set time. Um, resolution two ninety, um, resolution ninety-two, it's not so much has to do with the resolution itself, the certification of funds. Always take a look at the packet when you have this. Most of the certification funds also preference to be numbered contract or whatever it's being responded to. And I'm kind of thinking about even recommending all the recommendations. So on this particular one, it's missing the number on. Also, the resolution for one oh one is missing to be in on all the certification of funds. That is secondly. Always follow one. Also, that is the same case for resolution one oh four, it is missing to be in other. Um, regards to the ordinance, ordinance one oh six for us, a very good example to show exactly where, um, what was being replaced. And that's really cool, because a lot of folks don't always have access to the municipal code. People are going on that early in the company. So it's good to, you could write it out, but at least provide a copy of it, and then you read it in two months to see. You have to plan for transparency, you probably do a hundred things that you are acting on, you have to. I like the idea of the minute, uh, I like the idea of the time, of course, not tonight, but I like it more, I like it more forward. I just wanted to say, you guys really give some good information in your city comments, and so I need to see you cut them down, you know, maybe you might want to add announcements to your agenda. So separate from the messages that you provide, so it's different. You want to, or, you know, in writing or something like that, it could keep it separate because folks are going to hear from you. Um, I'm not really sure why you want to let people deal with time. So I hope they can deal with it a little bit more, because what difference does it make as long as they stay tuned to the time that's applied? As long as they give up their time, maybe it's because they were coming in late or whatever reason you put. I don't really understand it. Okay, and that's, uh, that reference I made to like, uh, whenever you're doing something with the municipal, whenever you're making amendments to the municipal code, you just go, you know, look at the end of the subsection or whatever, and what you're going to replace it with. I don't know what it was, the first time again, to my point, you need to have that available for public to review, so that they can make comments on it, tell us your comments on what it is that you're moving on. And I agree with that, as long as I have a decision, I do enjoy the meeting today very well. And I'm just, uh, feel so proud of all of you, and you do do just the same thing, which is very good. And as you know, at the same time, I'm a little bit happy.
Thank you, Senator.
Next up is the leading room.
Lady of Rogers, Rob Street, Trenton, Virginia. Uh, I'd like to thank the young lady that just spoke, she spoke on night and sent me things that I can't even speak about, so there goes such repeating, who said? Essentially, what a change in time, because I was talking with a few of my council members, and I seen there's some that changed their mind on the, on the ordinance. Some were against it, some were giving it, but all that's, you know, changed now. So I'm asking another request. Just like tonight, on nights when you have an executive session, move public comment first, because you may go in a public executive session for three or four hours, and the public may not have this chance to speak in time. So I'm asking that you, you jumped on this from that project to get attention. You ran down the ordinances, you amended the ordinances, and you did it all in less than two weeks. So I'm asking you to do this request the same way. And also, all people share their time, because it's like, we have, people have to come here to sit through presentations, they have to come and get their thoughts together, or they may have a family emergency, and they may have to get here late. And sometimes then they have an issue that takes more than five minutes to address. So those are two things that I think you should consider while you're doing all these things. You rushed and found this issue that I brought up. Now I'm asking you to rush and address this issue that I brought up, of moving the public comment before any executive session. Because I've sat here nights, when we came in, they went into executive session at six o'clock, didn't come out at one o'clock in the morning. And it's not fair to bother, because they don't get their chance to speak. We don't know if it's by design, we don't question it. But the young lady was right. I got the proposals of all the resolutions that y'all want to change, but it don't say what you're changing from and what you're changing to. As a union rep through New Jersey Transit, I have to have one percent transparency with my members. Anything that I presented, I must present it whole, not half, so they have a clear picture of when they vote on what they're voting on. So I'm asking you to also, uh, agree with the young lady, when you amend something. Because I got the, got it right there, and I had to go to my phone and bring up the code to see what you were changing. So there was one other issue on there, on one of the documents is, when a council member brings something to the council, and it's taken off the document, and they can't be brought back for a year, that's going to be changed. When can they bring it back? What's the timeline on that? There's no timeline in the ordinance. And you said, have a timeline, as to when that council member can bring that ordinance back. So if they're taking away that year limit that he has, that would just say it came right in that at all, according to the language. But you need to put a timeline in there as to when they can bring an ordinance back. And also, you need to, um, address the horrible issue in your resolution, where if there's less than seven members here, the designated person, number gets to make this decision on council on the meeting, but you don't have a date, according to the present resolution, but on ordinance, the meeting must be brought the next day. And this one, it's in here, don't shake your head, no.
We can't do that.
That record I asked you.
I'm sorry, by the way.
Yeah, see? You want to address that?
I can do that. Get the gentleman something, bro.
No.
The reason we took that out about the next day is it would be illegal. The ordinance was properly corrected many years ago before the Old Public Meetings Act. We're going to have another meeting, because this one has to end, and has to be properly advertised, and the ordinance would be act. I don't know how long that's been there, it's probably changed, so we took it out to maybe comply.
It's already in here, though. But it's not the public's fault that it's not put out there. So address that to the public level, that if something like that happens, you will get them a date at a later time. It's about transparency. You say you want to do things differently. You're doing things different because you're rushing up and bringing issues to try to address them. Some are right way, some question. So I'm asking, just do those few things that I'm asking of this council. Move the public comment before executive session. Give the council members a timeline as to when they can bring items back if this withdrawn, and allow people to hand their time to other people, so that they can get their message across. Because everybody is not public speaking friendly. They come up here, they get afraid, they see you up there, so they may need time to get their thoughts together. That's all that I'm asking. Generally, you know how, what was going on this weekend? I took a beating on Facebook, but I stood my ground. And those same people that was beating me on Facebook, I had to, are you coming tonight to voice your opinion? No. That's still not going to stop you from coming to speak your mind. I thank you for your attention, and I hope that you listen to the public and address those issues that I brought up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
David, nice. Next up.
Pity King, yes, of course, in my class, of course, members. My name is Debra Thomas, I'm a daughter of the bishop, he's a Thomas student. I'm sorry, my name is Debra Thomas. Address this issue, and then I should be doing it. Um, I stand here with my mother, just definitely Thomas, as well as my sister, and the audience. I'm free today in regards to the honorary street application application that I filed on May ten, two thousand and twenty-two, the dedication of my father, who passed away on March eleven, two thousand and twenty-two. The street requesting is West Front Street and between Barracks and Peace Street, where our local church is located. At the filing this application and submitted the check, the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars to the city clerk's office, I was instructed I would receive an update on the status of my application, um, which I did not receive, but the check was in cash. After not receiving the update, for about a month, I visited the office of the city clerk that was directed to the office of traffic to speak with Mr. Anthony Santor. Upon doing so, I discovered that Mr. Santor was not present in the office, and the receptionist instructed me to come back the next day. I, and then I then came back the next day, and Mr. Santor instructed me that he was working on my father's documents, and that he would contact me via phone with an update. After not hearing from Mr. Santor, I once again appeared at his office to speak with him, and he instructed me that everything was a go, and I should receive a declaration in the morning. I didn't know if I'm on the answer, went to Kevin Adia for the documentation. After a month passed with no information or relief, I showed back up to the office for an update. Um, I've shown up here multiple times, at least once or twice a week, just to get some information. Um, I should, um, I noticed that my father was also removed from the family, so I reappeared back to the city hall to speak to Mr. Santor without any response. Um, I decided to go there for her assistance, and I wished to help to a couple of council people. Um, and still they instructed me to come here to manage the state money table. Uh, March eleven, two thousand and twenty-three, which is this Saturday, which was one year since the death of my father. And my family wished that we could get closure for my father. My father has done so much in the community. Um, he, he was an awesome man, not just a pastor, not just care for his parishioners, but the community whole. He was a manager for the old park apartments where he housed, um, with two hundred and seventy millions for people that had low income. In that apartment complex, he also provided food for, while having a food back in the basement, for those families that didn't have it. He also gave our community cook, cook, cookouts, he gave our toys and clothes and food and shoes to the community kids. Every Easter, he could have a Easter gift party, um, he would have Christmas programs. My dad did so much. In nineteen ninety-four, he opened up a Christian home, Better Life Than Alcohol Center, for those who are drug and alcohol users. for those who were drug and alcohol users. Doing that, he allowed people that were on drugs and stuff to go to this home to get relief in my moment of opportunity.
Good evening, Madam President, Vice President, all the council members. My daughter, she is so passionate about this, as well as all my other children. I even thank God that I had experienced with my husband for 31 years. In the process of all of that, my husband was born and raised in a city in New Jersey. He was one that did not just want to stand and look and talk about problems in the city, but he wanted to be a part of solving problems in the city. And by doing that, he saw where there were the need, where it was a need, and he tried to meet those various needs. As my daughter had began to state, one thing that I thought was so amazing with him is that he took a home, took a house, rented it, got it stabilized enough that he would house different men that was on crack cocaine and dealing with alcohol addiction. Because he saw a problem back in 1994. That was a very, very serious problem. And he wanted to see what he can do as part of really resolve to that. And he helped over 300 men get their lives together, get clean from drugs and alcohol. He came as far as South Carolina just to be a part of the program, Red Bank, New Jersey, and so forth. But these are things that my husband, Bishop Thomas, did in the city. He had instituted an, actually purchased a truck, which is known as the Kitchen, is the Mills on Riddles Truck, where we would go around and feed various communities of children, adults, homeless, anyone that wanted food, and we would feed it. And it was a free truck. We didn't charge for any of the food. And we didn't just give them beans and rice. No offense to that, but we gave them home-cooked meals that we would sit at our tables and eat. On Thanksgiving, every year, we would be out in the streets on Thanksgiving Day just to make sure someone else had some kind of meal to eat and be thankful for before we would go home and eat ourselves. And our children saw my husband and I do these kinds of things. And they thought it was just only honorable to actually have a street in honor of him. And they thought it would be perfect where our church is now located down downtown. And because this is something that she is so heart set on with my children, she wanted to be here tonight, and she asked that I will be here with her. And of course, I was going to be here with her because we're rejoicing the anniversary of my husband's transition. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight, and please consider.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Michael.
I received a letter from my sister a couple weeks ago, and that is a result. And I got strewn out at home. And I basically received that. My vehicle was actually taken by police. That was a street, insured and inspected. I thought I would have some sort of help from you guys. And there is... I spoke with the detective. I have text messages, you know, like, "What is wrong?" No, I do not understand. How whatever you guys have been going on, you take vehicles, you sell them. Mine was leased, mine was inspected, mine was rented, mine had tags. And I'm not even allowed to bow with them, with my tags. If someone has an accident using my tags, I am responsible by law. Again, the tri police department, I'm not allowed to file for that. So wherever my dad's are, they're yours. It's an accident. I'm responsible. How can I deny this for? If it was one of you guys, you would step up and say, "Hey, Tri, where are your tanks? Why is this man not being allowed, or running money not allowed to use my tags?" That question would be answered quick. You know, if I'm wrong, please, just make a conversation. Don't do that. You know, I am involved by taxpayers' citizens. I've been in this state for almost 55 years, I can't leave this city. You know, English was second language. Like you, I came here from reservation. I'm Mrs. Gavin Mattis Trace. So I speak to it. You know, I have not forgotten my ancestry. But the thing is, I don't think doing that, you know, I expect help. I expect someone to do something, someone to say something positive. Because I was supposed to do the investigation, I need to tell you. To me, I forget a lot of things, and it's very important. But I, you know, remind you, it's still, you know, like, someone would give back to you, that's what didn't happen. I filed, and filed, and filed, upwards. And they're saying, "Oh, there's, we don't have records of this. We don't have records of that." On 31st December at 14:00 AM, I was at Tri Police Department. You had sergeants, COA, and SBR, or something to that effect, and I exactly shook the last letter of her name. For this week, I actually created 4:00 and 4:30. I was there for over 40 minutes. So I did this white group, and then, you know, with me, I was going to fly for my tags. It's like, but it was still on me. You know, I must be having registration experience ever since I was with Rowan Wood, and as with full coverage, only when I registered, or extracted, or whatever, with insurance. And during COVID, you know, for a brief time, I forgot about it because I had that money being paid for the registration. So now, you know, that cost me a big toll once. I get my vehicle back. Six weeks later, you told it again. But the second time, it was almost 100% leased. And I lived it, one side of the street to the other. And my friend who lived at 935 was also in poverty. Because her car was in the shop. I'm like, this does not make sense. And if you guys are going to say there's no record? No, at least since 2020, their vehicles have dash cam. And that's the ordinance. Yes, those have that on. And then they're going to say, "Are we having records of this? How can this be? If there was me doing something wrong, why say I have no records of this?" You guys would say, "Hey, look, this is what you did. This was wrong. This is your punishment." If I'm wrong, I'm going to accept a punishment. But this looks more like a police network. And I have family members that have a police officer. You know, and even sheriff in this city is my first cousin. But I do not understand if something's not being done right according to not not getting the proper advice, part of help, you know. 98% of all police officers break out, they do what they're supposed to. But something here is not right. And when I'm reaching out to you guys, and I'm like, "Hey, call back or anything", and then they're going to come like a cut. And I don't want to, you know, accuse them of you guys, if it's like that, but something is not right. If I'm wrong, please tell me. And I'm going to give you the payment. And I got this small account. I pay for a lot of tests for everything that I put in the holders to be 100% accurate. 100%. I swear myself, it's correct, and was correct. And it's theft. I expect you guys to do some, do a proper investigation, have police do a proper investigation. When the general affairs show you there's going to be two years before they can get back, you know, it could take up to two years to solve a case. To me, that's crazy. I'm the smallest man in the world. That's a stolen tag. And it's very difficult. I've got, you know, I'll put into this paper work for all of them. You know, you guys are supposed to be, this one will be like seven days. I'm not explaining to you guys, I've been there sooner than they. But if your paperwork says this is supposed to be done, this is not right. It should be done. You know, I really, you know, I'm what they expected. If somebody is like, "Hey, let me look into this. Let me get back to you. You answer right. No, you were not. This is why you're wrong. You tell me I'm wrong, I'm willing to accept. As a man, publicly apologize to everyone, and say, "Hey, and I will do that, hey." You know, but I'm not going to pay to get my vehicle back when it's being stolen. That's not right. And I'm not going to let it go when it's being stolen. That's not right. There is somebody here that believes enough, you guys, to do the right thing. That's all I need to say. And I hope you guys have it in your heart to believe exactly what I'm saying. Because I have no reason to lie. I have no reason to come back or do this over and over. But I will. And you guys, I mean, you're probably the greatest people in the world. I understand you guys still need to run. But each person is always concerned with their own problem. This was mine. And, you know, that, to me, is a big concern. Because I've always taught my children, young men just can't manage because in the back, it's the times. They'll tell you, I took a class, one of the classes he was teaching at the Adams Organization. First time they ever seen a man in his class with his sons. You know, it's like, we all did it in the same class. And yet, we scored the same thing, they thought we cheated. But we got the, we all got the answers wrong, despite the 96%. You know, for the land and asbestos classes. But like, you guys need to do something. Honestly. I think you all could be, I think somewhere along the line, there's something that's blocking you guys from what can be done. But I seriously believe you guys could step up. Because I'm doing my best not to say the same. I don't want to do that. Because I think the city has enough problems already that I mentioned. You know, I've been there 16 years. I've been here since I was seven years old. So, you know, we can do this the right way. But this, well, this, that's all there is wrong here. Because I actually believe you guys are prepared to do what I was told last time I was here. And it was in the summers. I have a detective's card, so I'm sure you can get back to me. Someone called me last month. But then, since then, I've forgotten. I know my time's probably up. Thank you guys for listening, and you're not cutting off. I'm sorry if I seem a bit hostile, but just imagine if someone's taken from you that you get. You know, you have the tools and the equipment. And then, you know, first time you pay a thousand dollars to get back, second time you're like, "No, I don't want to listen." Somebody that is right. You know, if not, you know, if you ask them, "How does the city do toll tolling?" Or just find, give people living in the city a bill.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you, Detective.
Great income. Over the past six years, they donated the computers that we're able to get to our students when they join our program. And it's been really crucial, especially during pandemics, we're able to stay connected to the boys. And having access to this type of technology was also, was awesome. And when we graduated our first phase of our program, they received the computers. So it's an incentive to receive the computers. And we're able to connect with them while they're in high school.
Andres Thomas, sorry, excuse your name and address.
I'm sorry, Andres Thomas, representing the father center of New Jersey. All right, and it's really important that we're able to continue, that TDI is continuing to receive these computers for our boys' benefit. We're able to stay connected to our boys by having these computers. And oftentimes, if they don't have access to computers, then we lose connection. So it's critical that they keep these computers. And it really gives them incentives to participate in our programs that they know they have that before coming at the end. And it's a useful tool for today's technology, going to keep you connected. So thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Hi, I'm Mr. Dante Sanders. I'm 15. And I'm very grateful for TDI, or, sorry. For the, sorry, my name is Dante Sanders. And I'm very grateful to TDI for their delegation, for donating their computer. And then, Dante Sanders, I am very grateful to TDI for their donation of their computers to help us keep connected via Zoom. And I will use this technology to also, to play for jobs. And because not having this connection is against the advantage. And unfortunately, my parents are not able to, or not able to afford to buy more. So I feel like it helps our household as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I believe that is the last individual I have for public comment. Council President, if you'd like to move to City Comment.
Please proceed.
Certainly. I'm going to start with the council members.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good to see you all here, and you all for coming. First, I just want to start off by saying, expressing my deepest condolences and my prayers to the whole family for the passing of our dear friend and giant in the training community, Eric Howard Thompson. He was someone that helped us set it up for a long time, or one of the many pillars that we had. He was someone that provided free use under the stars for years to all around the city and state. Starting here in the city, he experienced alcohol off the stage, which was amazing. He partnered with many organizations to help feed people and help provide services to the homeless as well. Myself and Brian Legley and Eric Montra Cax started feeding for the homeless in, like, uh, I'm sorry, dinner and movies at the stars back in 2014. And Eric, he came on their career charge. And then our friendship just moved from there and partnered on many other things that I assume is a thank you to him. Moving on, I actually, I just want to announce the Junior Public Safety Academy that is starting July 11 to August 15 for ages 12 to 15 at the Perry Street Firehouse in Beetham, New Jersey. I believe the applications are open now. And also, be suited downtown. I remember I can own a soup shop where fire is supposed to be located at 127 North Colours Street. They are celebrating their second anniversary. Actually, Evan, who is 22 years old, those people's before. It is on March 25 at 12:00 AM. I want to also address the, it starts with short staff. I'm not sure if it's clear. When the economic department, the government, or how to do it, it would be right.
No, it's a question.
It's a purpose. So I just think that, that, I do want to express only half of the constituents that run the fight, and touching has been a problem visiting their shores and having the economic department to inquire about city home property, taxes and things of that nature, that they weren't able to get these things. And we were given another reason to apply, but they cannot get it. So they cannot get it. So I have a concern about accessibility. And I would like to explore that having a country government to permit it. And I would like to explore that house that has come to the Department to work on, you know, transparency, work on accessibility, to this information that others ask and forth. Anyone should be able to go there and inquire about city-owned property. But the Fox always felt, we were told, is to look at the gray areas in the map and figure out if it's a city-owned property and let your own city propose it. But people should be able to get this, this property in terms of the one instead of working backwards. So I just wanted this to be a little bit more accessible in terms of our information so that people can take advantage of the economic priorities to consider, especially for people that are trying to pursue homeownership. Specifically, for trans Africans that live here already and would like to have a life in a new ownership. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight for our meeting, our complete short and sweet. To Mr. Ingram's point, he's gone now. And that's, that's the, sometimes the downside, right? Of moving through the comments, like, we have the answer, we can't do the back and forth dialogue during public comment. But we can say it now in City Com. So, when we recently had a doctor review, Council President and I, along with Mr. Garcia, we had had the conversation where, when there is executive session and there are no outside attorneys that would be present, we would move public comment to the front. That unfortunately didn't happen. It wasn't on the agenda that way, took that way tonight. Which is why I asked if we could go ahead and move it. However, moving forward, we decided, agreed, that that wouldn't be happening. So please understand that we are open. We do see the needs of the people. We have sat through the meetings personally, whether we were online or whether we were in the chambers, excuse me, at one time or another, have experienced the long process of the, of the executive session. And so we're moving time to meet the needs of the people. So that, that is already done. Tomorrow starts the police civilian academy. I can't wait because I signed back up and I'll be in here, woo! So I was in there before we had to stop due to COVID. We were like two classes down. I think we were getting ready to get into the whole part where, like, they put the dogs in and then they were taking us to do something else, some kind of simulation, and then it stopped. So I'm excited for that. So if you want to be a part of it, please be mindful, excuse me, of their upcoming classes that they have. We will be good about putting out information. Maybe we can talk about what that feels like as far as doing our council highlights or something. To put something together that you can put something to work out for people when they come here, just to have, if they don't have access online. Excuse me, shout out to Trenton Central High School. We had our audio visual performing arts, had the Riz play. And it was absolutely fantastic. So we were excited for that to happen. Along that same line, Cassius Theater is having a clean slate this weekend. I'll be going to opening night on Friday. I love Cassius Theater and the different things that they bring. So I'm not sure if Friday is sold out, but they also have a Saturday show. If you're interested in that, and if you miss both, please be on the highlight of the lookout for Cassius Theater. They have some great performances that come. On Saturday, I'll be speaking at Pub 13 down on Front Street. There's a financial literacy presentation. I thought I was speaking about one thing, but now they threw me in to talking for two hours about something else. So if you want to come into the city, hang out, talk for money, come to City at Pub 13, between eleven and one o'clock on, on Saturday. And then, I do want to say, and Councilwoman Edwards, I'm not trying to step on your toes, but Fathers and Men United is having their, their father-daughter dance that's coming up on March 17th on Bellevue Avenue. They do this every year. And our awesome lady, Don Hader, Councilwoman Edwards, is a part of helping to make that happen. So shout out to her. And my sorority, one of my sororities, Five Delta Kappa, we actually help keep the dresses for the younger ones. So we've been collecting dresses and everything. We're grateful to everyone who has donated, or has had family members that have donated and met me at the high school and brought dresses. I just really encourage everybody to stay engaged, to be a part of the process, to work with us and to just give us some grace on some things. Because we are really trying, as you can see, the questions we're asking, how we're moving through the dive and we're really giving you thought to everything that is coming before us. While we may not be able to jump right in, some of my answers, like, you can write away, or, you know, bear with us, come to the meetings and give us the opportunity to show you where we are, right? We're not just, we're not just throwing things out there just to, just to see what sticks. We've been out here with you all before we decided to run. We've been in the streets and in the trenches. We know what is going on in our city. And we are honestly committed to do the right thing by each and every one of you. Now, I'm going to share this with you real quick because I thought it was cute, but then I'm really quiet. Today, I got an email from a constituent, right, a neighbor. And so it said, "Personal cleanup service." I was like, wow, who's this? So I read the email and it was like, hey! So I see the people from the park came to clean up the area, the park area in front of your house, and then left the street. Mine was later than today. So I'm like, dad, they did? Well, tell me exactly what happened. What time was this? What was going on? Because I paid to have my little yard landscaped by somebody, so I'm not there. What's wrong? So next thing I know, they sent me a picture. So I'm like, oh my god. So then, I get the picture, you know, of the area and everything. So then I made the phone call. Hey, well, what's going on with people there at the park? You know, what's happened in my house? This is what was said. And so I was told that they had actually did the leaves at Stacy Park. They were going down the street. They threw everything in the back of the park, picked the leaves up, and had called in to say, "Park is already done." And we're told, okay, go to Catwater Park. And it just so happens that they went in front of my house. They were actually in front of my neighbor's house, right? When they got the order to leave and go back. I shared that with you to say that when I walked back, I explained everything to them. And I thanked them for asking me rather than assuming. Please don't assume that because you may see something, it is something that isn't proper. It is something that is not right. Please take the time to ask the question like my neighbor did, right? I'm a very transparent person. Most of you already know, I would put it out there first so you can, right? Nobody has time to click at this. Training needs help. We're going to do the work. We're going to do the work, right? And it would be nice if we continued in the same vein, that we all continue to work together to make that happen. We have some great minds in this room. We want to tap into what you have going on. We want to hear what you have to say. But don't always come with the problem. Come and help us with some of the solutions to. We're not so big here that we're not going to listen. We're going to listen because we want to help make it better. It's time for a change. It's time for us, and it's time for training to grow. Thank you.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes. Did you want to say Com?
Oh, yeah, I just heard a financial meeting, yeah.
It's at the hub. It's on Front Street, up the street. It's right on the same street as 1911 Smoke House.
Michael, I have to do. Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? It's almost end of class. I am going to be short, unlike my fellow councilwomen. We decided to make the session. I know you guys want to get on. So I just wanted to say, I want to thank the gentlemen who came here to play soccer. Myself and Loma, having come to support and play soccer, you know, getting the kids involved. It's been a wonderful program, and I'm glad that we're able to give ARPA funding to them. It's a wonderful organization, it gives the kids something to do, gets them to, you know, learn how to be teammates with one another, learn skills, and things of that nature. So I'm very happy that we were able to do that. Ms. Richardson, I see that you're in the room. I want to have a conversation with you because I have a lot of constituents contacting me. A lot, and I spoke to an elementary school, students at elementary school recently, and they want more parks in the South Florida. So I wanted to just speak, I have parks in mind. I would love to work with you, try to make some of these parks if we can, you know. I want to, Mr. Ingram, yes, he, he has been very, very, very adamant about wanting more time to speak. And I have to use time on ten minutes. Mr. Ingram, they put something on Facebook that he alluded to. And as soon as I saw something, and as soon as he mentioned me, I quickly called him because I'm completely transparent. And now, if I were to leave my own Facebook, I'm going to call you. I'm going to ask you what your issues are, how can you resolve them? And that is what Mr. Ingram and I did do. Just so you guys are all aware, I did have a phone call with him. I'm very pleased to announce that I've gotten two internships. One from a high school student, non-charity course, but it's diner. I spoke there for Black Student Union. And also from the College of New Jersey for Kinder Smile. So I would encourage anybody that knows any students, young students, high school, college age, that are interested in going to dental school. So please reach out to me. I would love for you guys to be a part, or love to definitely be a part of Kinder Smile located right downtown Trenton on South Paul Street. It is a nonprofit, they actively treat student, I mean, to treat young students, but they also educate parents on dental health, oral health, and they offer programs, you know, to go into dental school, to become a technician and things of that nature. It's right in very busy Trenton. So I would definitely ask anybody interested, if you know anybody is, who is, please reach out to me. I just wanted to say that I was just happy to see Dante speak tonight, although he was very scared. We need to see more of him, we need to see more of our young people here and coming to the podium and voicing whatever concerns, whatever issues, whatever ideas that they have so that they can become more vocal as adults and be able to stand up for what's right. Other than that, I was, I was happy to be honest with you this morning with the Trenton Community Street Team, by my very show. They're doing amazing things in all four boards of City of Trenton. And actually, they did advertise a lot of daughter dates that Jossie's a part of, and a number of other things. So, you know, there are people who are really doing the work in City of Trenton. A lot of people who really care, a lot of people who really put their best foot forward. And as much goes wrong in the City of Trenton, I want you guys to also keep your perceptions clean and clear and know that there are things that are going right in the city. And it's not going to happen overnight. We are taking babysats, we are getting through it. Like my councilwoman here said, you know, there's a lot of bright minds both in this room and on this stage. And, you know, we have a pledge to do the work. You guys have put your faith in us, you guys voted for us. We are here, and, you know, that's what we're going to do. So I want you guys to have a wonderful evening, and thank you again for joining us.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here also, because we still have an session to get into. My prayers are going out to the House of Congress. Eric Mohammed is one of my good friends also. And as Councilwoman Edwards stated, he did a lot for the community here in City of Trenton, and he will be missed. Also, I just want to thank everyone who came before us today, who shared their concerns. And I can share the same sentiments as Councilwoman Edwards. Please give us a little bit of time as we are learning and we are trying to help the community as much as possible in a timely fashion. Also, with, I want to congratulate, well, I know the support of the Soccer League also. As you know, Trenton Central High School kind of lacks feeder programs. So I think it's great that we're having that, so thank you for that. And Mr. Ray Ingram, I want to thank you for what you're doing with the devices that you're providing to the community. That is the need that we all need, and we noticed that during COVID. Thank you to Mr. Dante Sanders for being present in here and speaking up. And I also want to say, my concern also with the department who continues to make promises about some of our street dedication. This is the second family, so I hope that we can work to make that resolve in a timely fashion for those individuals at the World Bible Center Church, Bishop Thomas and his family. And just one other quick announcement, I just want to say here, there's a free citizenship class being offered on Mondays from six to eight PM, beginning in April to June via Zoom. And it is, if anyone is interested, it's not just for Spanish speakers. For anyone who is not a citizen and is looking to become one, you may email merster@litercnj.org for that information. Thank you.
First, we're talking about the public comment tonight. Just one thought, we can even consider having a public comment at the beginning of the meeting or at the end? Does that, sometimes if you come here, you want to speak, they might not be able to stay the whole meeting. So maybe they can speak at the beginning of the meeting, and then other people who want to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting can stay. Also, Trent High Basketball Team, who represents the city great. There's a lot of people in this room over there, we'll do them on. They play with their heart, their passion. It was always phenomenal to see the work ethic and how hard that coach was really pulling for his kids. And it was good to see all of my colleagues standing here at the end, clapping for the young men. It was something special. And we should be doing it for all these kids because we want these kids to be our next, you know, leaders of the city and the next leaders in this country. And so we should be doing our part every day we can. We talked about soccer tonight, but now that God goes at it, who's in Union Square Park, that's Team America. He's phenomenal with the kids over there. Got two hundred, and it keeps growing with the kids. So he's phenomenal in the community. And also, we talked about Bishop Thomas. That is, that is sad, that is another person that should be redeemed in the street. And the leader still has not done. Doesn't, we should give the staff and the state tour's office, we need to get more people in inspections, we need permits. We need to get our fire and our police that three percent contract that they so hardly work for and they should deserve. And I'm glad to see that the council is working to move the city forward. And we're grateful that the people that are coming here are coming here with the ideals. Half of us moved the city forward. So thank you, and great. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And being a part of our city council meeting is extremely important. Please continue doing that in the future. I'd like to just, right off the bat, about Bishop Thomas, Dabland, and his seventh officer here earlier. This is a real atrocious problem. I did speak with Dabland last week, I think it was on my colleague. And I plan on speaking with Mr. Santoro tomorrow. This matter will definitely be coming up. So hopefully, you will have a reservation soon to report. Because I know us up here at the councils, you've heard, we're going to start considering the county now, as well as in the future. Particularly for the family of some of the children that so much in our city. Just want to also, I would like to, for other comments were made, thank the former Councilwoman Staley. Go check if there's suggestions on announcements, if that's something we may need to consider in the future. Because it is important, as you've heard, a lot, there's a lot going on in the city. We want to make sure that folks who come to see the council meetings know about that. But also, through example, Mr. Ray Ingram, did you take our council meetings, just waiting for the word out to the rest of our city about things having particular good things happening? I also have some thank yous so much here because I know we are pretty prolific up here in sending emails about asking to get things done. So we should always thank folks who get it done. Like the first thing, Department of Sanitation, we had some garbage problems on East Rush Street, Stockton Street. And reached out to them, including some mattresses, which unfortunately did not have bags. And they made sure it was safely disposed after we were finding out for us in the streets. And also for public works. They did a great job getting out to Engine Number Nine over on Runz Gavna, which was a firehouse that we operated one time. Now it's been sold to a boat, but had a buildup of debris. They got a crew out to remove it, so you could not see that from Runz Gavna. And that's really important to make sure we have a good self-image and a good image of our city. And somebody gave up, and this was from a constituent regarding economic development. And they are a business owner as well as a resident. And one of the things I might want to look at for the city does not have one already in economic development or a business office is maybe create a position of a business grant navigator to help our small businesses in Trenton who can get access to different grant programs, whether it be from the state or our city or the county, how to navigate that and make sure that that process happens faster, it's more transparent. But also, that is a success. Because we don't want to discourage our business and our don't want to discourage our business owners from actually receiving money they're eligible for. And just finally, one last thing, I'm going to send an email to the, like, thank New Jersey Department of Sanitation for, if you might have noticed, a trial on the last week or two, they did a really good job trying to remove a lot of the graffiti that painted over and also starting to clean up a lot of the garbage that's been built up. We're one big expressway as well as the train tracks go through the northward from the beginning to the end. And one of the things that's been interesting to determine who has responsibility for what, and I found out NJNTU City only has responsibility from six tenths of a mile when you cross over the Ridgeline Bridge from Pennsylvania to the end of it where it terminates at the border of Lawrence and Hamilton. And people building good relationships, rebuilding good relationships. And I look forward to them doing some work in the future, including getting rid of the rest of the feed that's higher up, maintaining the litter situation, and also they promised to work on all of the street lights that are out on the highway from that six point six of a mile mark to the end of the bridge of Trenton. So, hopefully we will see that happen soon too. I just want to thank you back also of my colleague, Councilwoman Feliciano, about Clean Slate this weekend, it's a world premiere, a musical. I've not seen a musical in Trenton, I don't think ever, not as I've been trying to. But they also have a show on Sunday, so if you can, Miss Shy, on Saturday, please go on Sunday. There's planning during parking in downtown and it's a great way to support an arts event in the city, unbelieved, developed by us. So, thank you very much and hope to see you again on Thursday night.
Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosina. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being out here this evening. I'm not going to repeat everything that was said this evening. I just took this by technology, just waiting for what you do here. Mr. David Eifman, I appreciate your being here. Mr. Leal Rosina, that's what we hear you with the building construction. You will actually give all that address. Mr. Kurt Latuma, appreciate you coming out to share this about the American Rescue Plan and the soccer team. This is what he is saying, who I live near the same age, considered leading mother to us here, she's an amazing guardian for homeless, to make sure that she gives proper guidance as we are managing this new platform. Mr. Leal, he's not here, but as my council vice president said, we are hearing you, we're listening, we are paying attention. This is what he was saying to us, it's not falling on deaf ears. Yes, we have plans on moving this because we don't want to hold out about community hostage. We want it to be about the citizens of the city, move it forward, but we want to do that respectfully, which is why moving things to the forefront, even regulations, all of that is being moved to the front so that people can get out what they need to say and then they can go on. This is what I've worked for us. We're not trying to make you sit here while we have to do our work on one executive session. Mrs. Dabland and Stephanie Thomas, again, as my colleague said, we should not be here again talking about a meeting that has not been done. You really need to work on that and you need to be better with that. Mr. Michael Masters, I'd like to speak to you afterwards or at least if you're number before we leave here. I hear what you're saying and if we're being idle, we just, the city of Trenton stated mission, which I will be later on in a couple of minutes, said that we're better than that and we're actually going to show up better than that. Mr. Andre Thomas, TPI recipient, and Dante Sanders, thank them, I thank you both for coming out. I think they're gone now, but I appreciate them coming out. And speaking of work that is being done here, we need to hear about more good stories about what's going on and knowing that when we say that we are giving funds to an area, not community, it's nice to know that it's being to exactly where it says it's being done, it's going to. I want to lift up the capoeira, but focus, we have a meeting on the eighteenth of this month, which is twelve, going to Plington Avenue, twenty-three, the other night, that will help the police area at three fifty-nine Plington Avenue at two o'clock to four o'clock. Something I just want to lift up, several of my colleagues were here as well. We celebrated just not too long ago, a mother and son being honored by our police department, sorry, our fire department. And I just want to lift on that, they're directors, that just acknowledging and the good work that our fire department's doing, where the mother and son acknowledged with the absolute healing, how beautiful they are, and I commend them for recognizing that and knowing that it was a good place to farm. So, thank you for that, Director. And I think I also want to, as my colleague also stated, I have a family of Mr. Eric Ahana Mohammed, Mohammed, he's dear, he has been instrumental for so many of us, for so many different ways, for years and again, the majority of the time, it's meant that I don't know any of the time, he's taken a dime, he brings the things where he blesses the homeless, those who are less fortunate, when we do a movie and dinner in the movie for hours, those that are under all the homes, those who are less fortunate. He doesn't take one dime and he does a lot. He did a lot, so our hearts and goals go out to the family. I think that's all I have. Focus, we talked about all that. So, yeah, we're here, I wanted to, I'm very glad with this. Our mission for the City of Trenton State of recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust, we are committed to govern with integrity and responsible responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. As we grow and we grow here on these days, we will get, for example, what we're going to get, we hear you, City of Trenton, we hear you, and we want to find things that have been wrong over the years. We're just getting here. We are not going to solve things overnight, but we're going to do our best to operate effectively and make sure that there is full transparency. When folks bring this to our attention, follow him, look into it, anything needs to be corrected, that's exactly what we're going to do. But again, as Councilwoman said, actually be patient with us. This is things that have been going on for years. We haven't made it here, we haven't been here yet. We have made it, just without getting into three months. So, be patient with us and we might need to be, I'll remind you, we're going to take the advice of council, those professionals that are here in front of us, our directors, and full transparency is what we want, respect and integrity is exactly what we're aiming for. We want to make sure that what we're doing, you understand what we're doing and that what we're doing is for the good of our community. I'm going to thank you, Mr. Rosina, and I thank everyone for being out this evening. And I always want to hope to say, I thank each and every one of our directors for being here. I know it's a job to do all, and I know it's not easy. And so, I always want to just thank you. I want you to, I appreciate you for what you do. And again, I know it's a job. I thank you to our officers, to our fire departments, every department that's represented here. I know you're not getting it every day, but I sincerely thank you and I want us to be able to continue to have a good working relationship. Thank you, Mr. Rosina.
Thank you, Council President. I want to ask for your motion to move to executive session.
Sure.
I'll say I. I propose.